Call this meeting to order. It's Monday, November 10th, 2025, 7:00 PM. Welcome, everyone. Good to see you guys fight the snow to come out tonight. But we have a quorum of everyone. Everyone's here. Let's stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any additions or adoptions of the agenda, changes? I know we do, but I'll let you turn over your care to discuss that with us.
Thank you, Mayor. Town staff would like to have a, has a couple of requests. Number one, to remove the item 10A, old business. After inspection of the pond, the town engineer and the town planner determined the pond isn't quite ready for release.
10A, we're gonna, we're gonna hold off on that, and Bob is going to speak and give us an update on that. But no decision will be made, because you're correct, it's not ready. But I'd like to have Bob at least give us an update.
All right, sounds good. We would like to request the removal of items 11A, as the developers requested to withdraw the application, and 11B, to allow the planner to be present to present and discuss the text amendment.
Okay, so we're scratching new business altogether.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
I make a motion that we accept the agenda as amended.
Okay, all in favor of the motion? Okay, unanimous, we'll move forward then. Any other adoptions or changes to the agenda? None at this time? Okay, all right, we'll move, we'll move forward with that. Conflict of interest statement. In accordance to state law, it is the duty of every council member to avoid conflicts of interest. Does any council member have any known conflict of interest with respect to any matter or matters on the agenda tonight? If so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any participation in the matters involved. Any conflicts?
Nope.
Okay, none. All right, so we're good. Mayor and council member reports. Who want to go first?
Well, I'll go ahead and go first. Last month, we had our monthly Western Union Municipal Alliance meeting down in Waxall hosted. And the next meeting this month for November, it'll be our final meeting for this calendar year, will be on Thursday, the 20th of November at 4 o'clock over in Marvin. And I want to emphasize something that came up at the previous meeting that we're going to be discussing just to, and I'm strictly putting this out here for public consumption, in case you want to go to the meeting on Thursday, the 20th, and learn a little bit more about this. But it came to the group's attention several months ago that Waxall has a lobbyist that the town pays for up in Raleigh. This particular lobbyist does work for other people, other municipalities, not just Waxall. And in our discussions, as many of you've heard about the legislation that's been coming up the past year, about the zoning changes and things like that, Susanna Wedra, the rep from Waxall, has been giving us updates based on their lobbyists. A discussion came up and the suggestion was made that in order to be more proactive rather than reactive as our group of municipalities, would it be worth our while as a group to investigate seeing if this particular lobbyist would be willing to take on the other members of WUMA, when there's six of us in total here in the western part of the county? And to that end, the rep, this lobbyist is supposed to be attending this November 20th meeting to discuss with us specifically, you know, what she does and how she would be interacting with us, that kind of thing. Now, just to give you a little glimpse of what the discussion was centered on. Again, this was about us as municipalities being proactive rather than reactive. Because normally, by the time we are learning that a piece of legislation is under consideration, it's going to take something away, the horse is out of the barn, folks. That has been written, it's been debated in committee, it's been written up, and it's already in the process. By having a lobbyist who is going to be making monthly reports to all of our municipalities, and just, and again, that's Waxall, Weddington, Wesley Chapel, Stallings, Mineral Springs, and Marvin are the six groups, or six municipalities that we've got. We can hopefully, or could be able, number one, to stay ahead of things that the lobbyist is learning about that's going on in Raleigh. And secondly, it gives us as a municipality, each of the councils or boards, a way to ask questions directly and say, hey, I need you to contact our, you know, county reps and see what's going on. Now, just to give you a little, little note here, I did look on this, if you go on the Department of State, North Carolina Department of State webpage, you can find out who else has got lobbyists working in Raleigh. And the North Carolina Home Builders Association has got five. And they're, every day that the legislators are there, those five lobbyists are there. Rebic, which is the other developer group, if you remember, a few months ago, we got a letter from this particular group, tell cease and desist and yada, yada, yada. Well, they use a third party for their lobbyists, so I couldn't get a number of how many they've got. But if the Home Builders Association has got five, I'll guarantee you, they've, they've got more than done a couple. And so with what we've all been seeing coming on the horizon here, again, as a group, the WUMA group came, brought this discussion up. So again, this lady's supposed to be at the November meeting. She'll kind of talk about, you know, what duties and responsibilities, what she could be able to do for the different municipalities if we go in as a group. I'm sure there would be, if there's interest in it, there'd be legal things we'd have to do about as a group, about, you know, being part of hiring this person to, to look after our interests. But I'll finish by saying this, the other side has got people up there already, and it's more than just one. And if we, as these local municipalities that are worried about this stuff, if we don't get a voice in the game, then we're behind. And we're behind already. So I know this will be a subject for the future council members to discuss and debate, but, but I just wanted to get that out there for everybody to be thinking about.
No, and thank you, Jeff, for bringing that up. It's critical. Tom?
I'm still waiting to hear back from DNT on what roads they plan to resurface this year. They said they would contact me as soon as they had that information, which they have not yet.
Okay.
Good information, Jeff. Thank you. I don't have anything to report this time.
Brandon, anything?
I have nothing.
Okay, all right. We'll move forward to public comments. Okay, before we start, I want to read this here. This is our rules for public hearing and public comments. When you come up, I want you to, you know, please give your name and your address before you begin for your comment. Public comments are limited to four minutes. Public hearing is limited to three minutes. Comments will be directed at the entire board and not individuals attending in the audience. As I stated last time, if someone looks and starts addressing the audience, then I'm going to stop you and ask you to stop and just go back to your seat. Your comments should be directed at the board, so once your head turns, I'm going to go ahead and stop you, okay? Designated spokesman for the group of three or more may be allocated six minutes to speak. At least three members of the group must be present and names and addresses of those members, and those members must be present, and that, and those name and addresses must be submitted to the town clerk before the meeting begins. Other than pursuant to this rule, you may not give your time to another spokesperson or speaker for your allotted time. You must be civil in your language and your presentation and act within reasonable standards of courtesy. Use of slander, name-calling, personal attacks, or threatening speech or behavior is prohibited. The audience must maintain order and decorum in their conduct. Please refrain from disruptive applause, comments, or disorderly speaking during the meeting. Disturbances will be prohibited. The mayor or a majority of the council may suspend these rules at their discretion. Failure to abide by these rules after receiving notice by the mayor may result in, one, termination of your comment period and/or removal from the meeting entirely. So again, you'll be addressing us the entire time, and don't look that way. First one up is Christopher Neve. Come on up.
Christopher Neve, 110 Chastone Court. I would like to sincerely thank those who supported my campaign over the past few months. Thank you to all who provided feedback and encouragement along the way. I was honored to have the opportunity to form new relationships and continue those that were previously established. We should be grateful to live among so many wonderful friends and neighbors. Throughout the campaign, I set out to be an example of integrity in politics that I, along with many others, want to see. I am far from perfect and relied on God for the strength and wisdom to know how to navigate each unique challenge. Unfortunately, a campaign that should have been run on the merits and accomplishments of the past two years was one of lies and slander toward the opponent. These lies were spread to cast doubt about my platform, personal integrity, and public service experience. I forgive you, Jim, for the dishonest behavior I personally witnessed, and I forgive you for degrading me and my family's reputation in front of my face to voters on Election Day and throughout your campaign. I would like to thank those who shared encouraging words and showed support to me and my family. Although we didn't hear from each one personally, your support was evident by the final vote count. The results of the election did not reflect the loss for a single candidate, but for all the residents of our town who desire to have elected officials working to wholeheartedly serve them. The unifying financial ties and backing behind each wall candidate should cause us all to be concerned. Very soon, our entire council and mayor will belong to the developer-backed Weddington wall. Over the past few years, we have seen record amounts of money being spent on campaigns in Weddington. The majority of this money is coming from a real estate management group and a developer. While legislation is being pushed in Raleigh to limit the ability of local municipalities across the state to make their own zoning decisions, could it be developers are now working to extend their reach to more directly influence our local elected officials in the decisions they make for our small town? I have concerns about those advising and leading our developer-backed wall. Even though the next two years are uncertain for us, I will continue to serve our town and be a voice for each resident and family here. My desire is for us to return to our founding values that made us such a desirable place to live. I will continue to advocate for one-acre lots, limiting to commercial where it's currently zoned, eliminating wasteful spending, to reduce taxes, use my law enforcement experience to help reduce crime, and improve communication and transparency to each resident. Let's work to build a healthier community by respecting our neighbors. My hope is that more residents will get involved. Please reach out to me anytime as we continue working to improve our town together. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ruben, come on up.
My name is Ruben. I'm out of Baxleye Community just down the street. I did not run for office.
What's your address?
2103 Green Cypress Lane.
Okay.
So I want to speak about Toll Brothers and our pond that we were specifically, LaBella was here, Bob was, we met together last week after we had our last meeting together here, and their bond did not get released. And so we were happy that we actually came out here, spent some time, and you guys listened to us and actually gave us the opportunity to have Bob come out and visit with us. That was a great meeting, good opportunity for us to really show him what we saw. And out of that meeting, I think he'll go over this as well, but a lot of things happened. Number one, we're going to have an engineer come out and actually review that pond. We've had significant cracks in there, some that went down four feet deep, even more significant than we expected. And that was seen by Bob as well, and he made a point of it too. We've had slopes on the sides of it that are not three to one, they're two to one. We're going to have engineering survey approve to see if that's actually the fact or not. From by eye, it looks like it's two to one or less. We also have issues with trees growing in the outfall, which is a big issue for us. Because if we allow them to grow, eventually they're going to destroy the outfall or they'll block the outfall, preventing the system from working how it's supposed to work. We've also got trees that are growing on the property that were damaged by Toll that were not properly addressed. And Toll has pushed that on us, saying that it's the association's responsibility to address that. Where it clearly hasn't been our doing, it was their doing. And these are issues that were created by them but were never addressed. And so having Bob come out, take a look at that with us, review that. And so now they're coming back to the table to try to address that. And so we asked that you guys would continue holding off from providing that release of their bond until they address all of these steps, and it takes some time to do that.
Okay, thank you. Great, thank you. Is it Vincrack? Come on up, thanks. Sorry about that.
Good evening, and this is Venkates Machala from 2002 Green Cypress Lane.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks for listening to our comments last time. We did meet with Toll based on the, you know, meeting that we had last time. We did some progress, but not entirely to our satisfaction, right? I know one of the main issues around the pond, there are still some outstanding site work around the pond community. And Toll, I mean, there was an engineer inspection also was done, and the report is also sent to Toll. They haven't come to any agreement, saying, you know, it'll be fixed on time, right? So that's one key issue which is still outstanding based on what we discussed last time. And the second thing is, which I want to talk a little more in detail, it's about the Weddington ordinance, right? As part of the Unified Development Ordinance, the builder need to have set up a proper escrow funds, right? So I just want to list on a little more points. It says the UDO mandates a developer fund and escrow account with 15% of the stormwater construction cost before regarding plans or receiving permits. To our knowledge, this was never established. The fund is in the community's primary safeguard, right? And as part of the, another ordinance which is listed, there's no funding schedule, right? The developer also failed to establish the required schedule for the HOA to fund the account to two-thirds within the five years and 100% within 10 years, right? So this was all need to be set up, planned before any HOA take over, and this is directly related to the pond. And it's, you know, listed on the ordinance, so these activities never happen between us and the builder. So yeah, I would like, you know, a community to consider all these points. And we request the bond to be held a little longer until we resolve with the builder. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming. Thank you. Wesley? Thank you for coming. Can you give us your address as well?
Sure, it's 3109 Weeping Below Drive.
Okay.
I'm also from Baxleye. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. We have one more person coming here to talk about Baxleye, and I don't want to go over the entire list that the team has already covered today. But what I wanted to mention today is, last month, we were here, we made an emotional plea that this is what Toll needs to do for our community. We came here with a dream, and we were sold the burden. We didn't want to walk away with the burden, and we thank you for the boat of staying by us, and thank you for Bob and the others to come in and check what's going on and what needs to be remediated. So today is not about, the list has been decided. All I want to mention today is, we would really request you to continue supporting us because this is not just about building a community and shifting. This is about a neighborhood, a community where people are living. And last time Toll talked about numbers, they just said that it's just a pond. We're not going to be worried about anything else because the HOA has taken over it. What I would really mention is, we did look at the numbers, and if you look at the fund that, the funds that were talked about, and all the issues that were talked about, all this is less than, less than 2% to 3% of the total bond money that has been kept here. It's not a huge amount, it is around 2% to 3% of the total bond money. If Toll wants to be a good builder, a good neighbor in this community, all they need to spend is a certain small percentage of the bond money. If they do so, they will win the goodwill of not just this community, but of the goodwill of the residents of Weddington. And Weddington is one of the fastest-growing suburbs in the whole of Charlotte, and the whole country knows that. In order for a builder, a luxury builder like Toll, to grow and survive here, they need the goodwill of the residents of this community. So I really want to quote the words of Toll Brothers CEO, who mentioned that customer experience is their core value, and community is what they build on. If Toll believes in what their CEO says, we will request them to work with us, to work with our community, to address all the problems that have been listed below, and then we will be a big supporter to Toll continuing forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Praja? P-R-A, is it J-A-J? It just left. Okay, I'll come, I'll come back, I'll swing back. Or Mark? Mark Shepherd? Oh, which, this is the, you should, you want, you should be on another list, you said?
I just signed that. I thought that was sign.
Oh, I got you, got you. Okay, okay, no problem, no problem. Is it Sanui or, I'm sorry?
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to stand before you again. As a proud wedding, as a proud resident of Weddington, I am here to raise concerns and support my community regarding the builder's practices, particularly affecting the shared spaces and community infrastructure. Over the past several, many of, over the past several months, many of us have faced challenges that go beyond individual homes. The concerns, I'm sorry. The concerns include the state and future of our shared areas, the retention pond infrastructure, the management of HOA funds, as well as the basic principles of decency and transparency. As my neighbors and our HOA have presented, I would like to also emphasize and support further the uplift Toll Brothers should be required to complete. The retention pond in our neighborhood was designed to manage stormwater and prevent flooding. However, reoccurring issues such as improper grading, poor drainage, and lack of regular maintenance raise serious concerns and questions about the effectiveness and longevity. As of November 5th, Toll committed to completing a list of items outlined by LaBella, and since it is only November 10th, they are incomplete. Our green space and pathways are vital for recreation and fostering community spirit. Unfortunately, many of these were neglected, such as overgrown grass, dead spaces, dead trees, and irrigation issues. The lack of initial upkeep diminished our neighborhood's appeal and utility. The HOA reserve fund was clearly not handled properly, leaving us in a poor financial position. And what appears to be worse is that we have no clear answer from Toll. While we recognize the need to maintain the future HOA account, this is a failure on Toll and when the ownership was transferred to us quite fast and in a poor manner. The bond release may speak to contractual requirements and not cover all issues being raised, such as the common area and failure to leave them in a decent condition. There are a plethora of tasks that Toll was not able to deliver on, such as the planting of two trees in each yard, pond care and planting as promised during the sale of our homes, pond maintenance that has been done numerous times, but the efforts that are completely failed to actually succeed. The most important in our neighborhoods, well, is well-being and integrity. As I thought about Toll and the many hours spent as a community discussing heartbreak and disappointment we have faced trying to escalate our concerns, I think of saying my loved ones and my mentors say to me, what I say to my children often, it is not about who is right, but rather what is right. I sincerely feel betrayed and disgusted at a big builder not able to deliver on their product and services toward the end of their project at enclave at Baxleye. While we all can come together and make our community a space where we all are happy to be and enjoy our views, it is unethical to collect funds from people within a certain intention in mind and deliver something quite different. With that, I respectfully urge to hold the builder accountable for their commitments. We purchased into a multimillion-dollar community, and just over a year in, it is in horrible state because of Toll. With your leadership and the city's partnership, we believe our neighborhood can thrive, providing a safe, beautiful, and inclusive environment for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll come back. Is it Praja? You had signed up?
Hi, I'm Prasad Burda.
And can you give me, give us your address as well?
Baxleye as well, on 2006 Green Cypress Lane.
Did you get that, Karen?
So I have nothing to add. All of my colleagues and my friends, they covered every item. Thank you so much.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. That's all we have for public comment. We're going to move forward to public safety. Deputy Ren, come on up.
Mayor, Council, once again, thank you. It's truly an honor to be in front of you, especially just before Veterans Day. It really means a lot that you've done a lot, especially to reach out for this town. Citizens, thank you so much for your emails, for your calls, for your comments as far as Veterans Day, letting us know just how much you appreciate us. It not only means a lot to us, but it means a lot to the community to know that you support us. I'll go ahead and get, get straight to the bad news. So now one hangup went really down, which is fantastic. Hopefully, the kids are back in school. But as far as wrecks, we actually went up by one wreck from 27 to 28. So last month, we had 27, so this, this month, we went up just a little bit. Alarm calls stayed the same, we're answering 24, so last month compared to this month, so we're at 24. So we're pretty consistent with our alarms. So burglary to a commercial went up to three. Commercial business, as some of you very well know, Weddington Corners is a fantastic location, it's a great area. If you go to Jersey Mike's, if you've been to Papa's Pizza, you know probably what happened within that area. Approximately 3 o'clock in the morning, we had no less than three individuals break into both locations. One was armed, one did use the firearm to get into a cash register. He was able to basically walk away, nothing but sailboat fuel, pretty much nothing. So with that being said, thank you so much for being vigilant. It wasn't just the alarm that called our attention, it was several different people, not only on the cameras, it was Amazon drivers making early deliveries, so community is extremely vigilant, and we thank you very much. We did drop down to a burglary to a home from two to one, so went down by one. Careless and reckless driving also went down from 17 to 15. Domestic disturbances dropped by half, so we typically answered eight from last month, now to four. Preventer patrols, once again, that's us getting in your neighborhood. Once again, that's us being as prevalent as we can, especially during October. We went from 562 to 581 calls for service within a neighborhood. So that's just us being seen, being in your area. Civil papers, last month went to six, now we're at 24 this month. Suspicious person went from five to eight, so last month, we answered eight. This month, we're not getting as many suspicious people, probably because of Google Fiber being put in. So that being said, you see it, call it in. Just because they, you don't know them from your area, you know your area most of the time better than we do. They look like they don't belong, probably don't belong. Go ahead and give us a call. Suspicious vehicles, we're only at 12, we're maintaining that 12. You see a car in the area you don't like, we're getting more calls about suspicious vehicles. That Amazon driver's coming to deliver that Christmas present that you didn't know that you're supposed to be getting, go ahead and call it in for us. Amazon driver are not supposed to be coming out at 6 o'clock in the morning, 4 o'clock in the morning. They're supposed to start their service at 6 on. So if you see that Amazon driver, maybe they're in their personal vehicle and they have a sticker on the side, just be cognizant. If you're walking your dog and you're like, well, they're stopping at multiple houses, they're not getting out. Please let us know, please let us call. So traffic stops, I'm not going to hit this one really hard because I have some more about that. Last month, it was 57, this month, it was 94. So with Jersey Mike's and the incident at Papa's Pizza, we really wanted to try to enforce some things at night. So we wrote a traffic saturation plan. So we had deputies from Indian Trail, DWI Task Force, our warrant task force, as well as your Weddington deputies. So Saturday night on August, oh, I'm sorry, October 25th, we had, it was a four-hour saturation, starting at 8 going to midnight. Two DWI arrests, one drug seizure, three vehicles that were towed due to, whether it was insurance violations or anything of that nature. So with that, it was 40 motor vehicle citations, not to include written warnings or anything of that nature. And that was only from 8 to 12 on a Saturday night. So we really wanted to put this place to make it look like McAdenville at night. We're cutting on the lights, some people were paying the bills. So with things of that nature, we heard what you were saying, and we got out there at night. So we really wanted to let maybe some bad people know, not only we're here during the day, but we're also out here at night. So we got to tow some people, we got some DWIs off of it. Leading into the DWIs, if your lips touch the bottle, foot don't touch the throttle. Now, when I say bottle, that doesn't mean alcohol. If it has THC in it, and you decide to maybe, that's not alcohol, I'm going to ingest it. We can test for that, too. We have a lot of things that are at our resources right now. We have a fantastic crime lab that loves to spend blood, and we will have no problem objecting to get a blood analysis. We have a whole DWI task force that those guys are extremely professional and good at what they do. And that's what they did last Saturday night in Weddington. If you get on Channel 9, they did an expose on us. So some of the Weddington deputies also assisted with Indian Trail because they came. So some of the Weddington deputies also assisted with Indian Trail because they came here. Uh, it was over 157 citations in total, not to include warnings. Uh, multiple vehicles towed for no insurance. Uh, the reason that the sheriff is backing that so hard is because if you get hurt, and if you have no insurance, or someone hits you that has no insurance, he believes in protecting the community as best that he can. I know that some of you, uh, were kind of worried, and I got a lot of emails about Taco Bell. That was a very serious and traumatic event for not only the family, but the family there at work. Because the LPR system, we have a license plate, license plate reader system, whether it's Flock or any other system. We're not talking days, we're talking hours that we had the offender in custody. So it wasn't multiple days, it wasn't a week, it was within hours. We're able to go into our system and find that vehicle, make, model, we actually looked at tire sizes. We can match it up to the registered vehicles within Union County, and they use that system to locate the offender and where he lived and how he operated. So we're able to take him into custody safely. We're able to talk to him and get his side of the story. But it was based upon that fast and speedy resource of that technology that you helped us get. Uh, we can't say thank you enough, not only for you letting us do it, but for you supporting us by doing that. LPRs are a great tool, but our, one of our greatest resources are you all. It was witnesses that told us, making models of the vehicle, that we can plug into these tools. If we don't have these tools and you all out here helping us, our jobs tend to get a little bit difficult. Uh, I can't say thank you enough, once again, two seconds on the lips are always going to be on your hips, just like with gluttony. If your lips touch the bottle, but should not touch the throttle, that includes THC. So if you see anything that's, uh, maybe a beer infused with THC, please be extremely cognizant of what you're putting in. Get an Uber, I can't, I can't encourage that enough. So with the holidays coming up, look for Amazon drivers, where there should shouldn't be, trying to give you some tips. And really focus on anything you see suspicious as far as DWIs. We're stepping up our enforcement, especially at night, just like we did not a couple nights ago. Whether it's Indian Trail, whether it's here in Weddington, wherever we can. Uh, but once again, thank you so much for having us out here and giving us all the tips. All of our information is on the town's website, if you can think of anything else. Thank you.
So, go ahead, first.
The Amazon, you said 6 a.m. is when they start, how late do they go? Because I swear.
So we really wanted to focus on, not even the big Rivians or anything of that nature, we really want to focus on the POV's, the personally owned vehicles. If it's your personally owned vehicle and you're a subcontractor, if you notice how those are the people flying through your neighborhoods that we catch on our radar trailer, those are the people that we tend to catch, "Oh no, I have the wrong house, so let me cut through this person's house." So now we have multiple trespassing calls, now we have suspicious person calls. Uh, sometimes those people aren't the slowest of drivers. Maybe that magnet flies off on 45, they don't know it, next thing you know, you have people running up with packages. So, uh, on a good rule of thumb that I use, banker's hours. They shouldn't be coming up to your driveway at 4 a.m. in the morning, knocking on the door, throwing a package, and running. Does that kind of answer that question?
Yeah, I mean, so they, how late can they go? Midnight, 10:00? I mean, they're on my driveway all night long.
So the rule of thumb, i- if you see an Amazon truck, as far as that truck goes, uh, I can't dictate their policy, but I can dictate, uh, what we have in North Carolina, it's called the Castle Doctrine. Maybe if anybody has a smartphone, I will Google Castle Doctrine. Uh, Castle Doctrine basically says that you can protect yourself and a third party, and if you don't think they're there to deliver a package or take you to Sunday School, maybe, um, you can defend yourself. So if you think that they shouldn't be there, and if you don't want to call 911, uh, I encourage you to study your amendments in the Castle Doctrine.
Thank you.
No ma'am, thank you.
And I want to point out too and say thank you for, you know, you guys, it seems that these new Flock cameras that we installed are helping, and they're, they're, they're doing their job, correct? Obviously, with the Taco Bell incident and, uh, and other situations around town over the last several months. So you guys are able to use us?
Yes, sir, it's a resource that we've tapped into in multiple different ways. Uh, vehicle turns into Highgate, by the time they turn into Highgate, uh, I'm already pretty close, being a contracted car. It was an old F-100, those of you that know your trucks. Uh, the F-100 is a very old vehicle. He reported it stolen on Tuesday, I catch it on a Friday. During that Friday, we stopped the mail, get to talking to him, explain the situation. Uh, he says, "Nope, I bought it from him." Okay, perfectly fine, I completely understand the situation. Continued the investigation upon the stolen vehicle, still reported stolen. He also didn't tell me about the firearm that was stolen in there. So, uh, we use what we call the one plus one rule. One crime, maybe another crime, things of that nature. Um, so not only, it was right down the road over here in Highgate, stolen pickup truck, but it also led to multiple other different arrests and charges.
Cool, good, it's good to hear. And two, uh, just to reiterate what you said about the holidays coming up, you guys are going to be, uh, being even more vigilant, you know, I'm going to call it boots on the ground, just watching everything and just sort of, you know, making sure everybody's protected.
Uh, yes, sir, absolutely. So, um, just one of our random tactics that we like to use, we love our traffic saturations, we love things of that nature. Um, just like one of the stats that I read a little bit earlier, uh, our civil paperwork. So, uh, we went all the way up to 26. So we're getting all the way up out there in the area. So whether it's a service of, um, this person suing this person, or it could be a civil work as, you know what, someone's having a bad day, and I have called for help, and maybe they have thought about some holiday blues. And if you think that someone maybe needs to go see a doctor, that is a civil paperwork for a commitment paperwork that we do serve.
Okay, all right, thank you so much, I appreciate it, thank you.
Perfect, does that include personally owned vehicles for the subcontractors? Thank you.
Okay, um, consent agenda. Can I get a motion to, uh, approve the consent agenda as presented?
So I moved.
Okay, all right, uh, all in favor? Aye, unanimous, okay. Uh, consent agenda is approved, unanimous. Uh, old business, and, uh, I'm going to ask Bob to come up, and this is concerning or related to the, uh, the bond release at Enclave at, uh, at Baxley. So, uh, fill us in and where we're at and what we need to know.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and members of council.
And Bob is with, uh,
I'm with Lobella Associates.
Yeah.
And, uh, I do not live in Weddington, I live in Mid Hills, I'm not far away. Um, as far as Enclave at Baxley, uh, on morning of October 31st, we met with members of the HOA and looked at the dam and walked around the neighborhood, looked at a dead tree and some other trees that are alive now, but they look suspect in the future. Uh, right after that meeting, uh, we met with Toll Brothers. We walked the same area. One thing I will say on the dam is, uh, I did take a probe rod with me, and we looked at the cracks in the dam. I don't think the cracks in the dam are structural concern, but we are requiring Toll to get their engineer of record to evaluate. You know, we took a probe rod and, and, and probed the soil around it. I think it's going to be okay. Uh, there are some remedial repairs that Toll was doing, but we asked them for an engineering review, recommendation, and report. Uh, we also looked at areas of the outfall with Toll from the, uh, stormwater pond to clear, there's two trees growing up in the outlet below the, the pipe outlet. Uh, and Toll is also going to survey the slopes to evaluate, whether they are at three to one, as they should be, or what they should be. So, we looked at a dead pine tree that is at the exact edge of the, you can see from the new grass, the extent of where the clearing was done when the development was done, was built, the subdivision was built. Toll agreed to take that tree out. We looked at two other trees across from the main entranceway where the slope has been cut and the trees are probably three or four feet above the road. And my opinion is those trees probably will not survive but a few years just because the root system, uh, has been damaged. Toll committed to have an arborist look at it and make recommendations. I feel fairly confident they'll say to take them out. But, you know, that's what they committed to do. So, I think, uh, as far as, we contacted NCDOT about some of the ponding, particularly at the cul-de-sac. And there's one other area, all we could get from NCDOT was they would look at it again after the next time it rains. So, I don't know if we will have any success on that front. Uh, that's kind of where we are with Toll. We gave them a list of some punch list items. We also mentioned the street sign is a little crooked, and the bracket was separating, so they said they would address that as well.
Okay.
So that's kind of where we are. Now, um, that's why Toll has not asked again to have their bond released. They know they have some things they need to do. And that's kind of where we are.
What do you, what do you see the timeline being on this? I know it's, it's hard to say, but would you say months, you know, to get this kind of stuff, to look, be looked at? I'm just trying to get an idea.
Yeah, I would say probably a month or two.
Couple, couple months, maybe?
Yeah, probably. I think it's possible, it could be resolved by next month, but I don't know. I mean, we will let you know, I mean, Toll would have to be the ones to say, "Hey, we're done, come look at it again." But there's certain documentation they have to provide to us as well. So I don't think the urgency is quite as great for them as it was. Because they, you know, they're trying to get out, now they realize there's some things they need to do, so now they're focused on getting those things done.
Okay, and you are personally working with them, you know?
Yes, I will, I will be involved in all final inspection from then on.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yeah, because we, we just want to make sure, you know, you're, you're personally involved with Lobella, to make sure all these are, you know, and check, and, 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 and again, just like we said last time, check every, everything. And I know the, the town is working, and I know this is not your area, but the, uh, the sinking fund, you guys are working on that with, uh, the neighborhood, correct? Greg is, okay. And, uh, Council, you have any questions or thoughts, concerns?
I just look forward to hearing everything being resolved.
Okay, and, and obviously, you're working closely with Greg to, to let, let him know. And can, uh, can Greg as well just keep the, the HOA, the residents informed of where you guys?
We're plugged in now.
Okay, awesome.
They, uh, they asked for updates, which I shared with them, so.
Okay.
If I have more news, I'll share it. Right now, I have no news since that, follow up to that meeting.
Gotcha, okay, great.
All right.
Thank you so much, appreciate it, thank you. The new business, as you see, as we've, we've deleted it off. Update from our finance officer. Did I miss it? Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped.
Very bottom.
You're right, code enforcement.
It's in your packets, if you have any questions, please let me or Greg know. And you're just chugging along?
Looks like the numbers have gotten better.
Yes.
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for doing that. Okay, now Leslie. And, and I'll ask you to come up.
You do have in your packets the monthly financials for October, and you also have the, um, September 30th quarterly summaries for our grant monies. The art money, the, um, SCIF money, and the park money. So it just shows you what we have, the art money's gone, but we, it's not a closed out grant yet, so we still have to report. And then, um, we have not spent anything from the park money, we are using SCIF money first.
Okay, and, and I missed the SCIF second when I was going over everything, but I'll get with that.
The SCIF's the long one because it has all those multiple projects on it.
Okay, I, okay, I missed that one. All right, I'll get with that, get with you on that.
All right.
Okay, any, uh,
Nope, everybody's waiting to the first of the year for all the money to come in.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Wasn't mine.
Uh, updates from, uh, town planner and town administrator?
Um, just a couple. Uh, the ARIA conditional zoning amendment will be on old business and next month's, um, agenda.
Okay.
And there will be a public hearing, and that will all be noticed.
Okay.
The tree lighting is Friday the 21st from 5:30 to 8:30. And I wanted to shout out Rich and his team of, at the Chris, Charlotte Elf, putting the twinkle on Town Hall for the holidays. And thank you very much to the Rotary Club for the flags for Veterans Day.
Yep, all right, thank you. Transportation, uh, really not to, nothing to report, no really updates, uh, from, from last month. I sort of, you know, gave everything I knew then, and there hasn't been anything to add to that, so. CRPTO is just, uh, really just, you know, budgetary type things, that really nothing going on at this point, that anybody being interested in. Council comments? Anybody want to go first, ladies?
So I'm going to read a short little blip here. I, I want to take a moment to honor Veterans Day and thank all who served our country, your courage, sacrifice, and dedication to help protect the freedoms we enjoy every day, and we're truly grateful. Tonight, I also want to take a moment to recognize and thank two dedicated members of our Weddington Town Council, Jeff Perryman and Brandon Howie, for their years of faithful service to our community. Jeff has served on the Town Council for the past eight years following, or, following his eight years on the Weddington Planning Board from 2007 to 2015. Throughout his tenure, Jeff has been a steady and thoughtful leader, guiding discussions with integrity and helping shape policies that protect the rural character and quality of life that define Weddington. His commitment to responsible growth, balanced decision-making, has left a lasting impact on our town. Brandon has served four years on the Town Council, representing District 3 with dedication, compassion, and a true heart for the community. Brandon has been an advocate for safety, environmental preservation, and maintaining the sense of a place that makes Weddington special. Her practical approach and genuine care for our residents have strengthened both the council and the community it serves. Together, Jeff and Brandon have given their time, talents, and voices to ensure Weddington continues to thrive, not just for today, but for generations to come. Their leadership, collaboration, and commitment have helped preserve what makes our town unique, while preparing it for a bright future. On behalf of the town of Weddington, and, and me personally, I want to thank you for your service, your dedication, and your lasting contributions. We wish you continued success, fulfillment, and all that lies ahead.
Yes, yes.
It's been good getting to know you.
Mm-hmm, okay, would you like to go?
Oh, yeah, sure. I want to just reiterate what Karen said, thank you to Rotary for the flags. They looked, um, phenomenal today, especially pulling in, in the wind. I know the wind was something to battle, but it really had Town Hall looking nice and concert with the lights that are out there. I know Karen, you arranged for those, and they look wonderful. Additionally, like Darcy said, I want to thank, um, all of the veterans that have provided all of us in this room with so much that we have, including me and my space in this seat, um, right now. And, um, thank you, Darcy, for your kind words.
Okay. Jeff, would you like to go?
Well, um, thank you, Darcy, for, for your kind words. You know, as I'm finishing up here, uh, I guess there are three groups of folks I want to thank. I want to thank the residents of Weddington, uh, for giving me the opportunity. Uh, I want to thank town staff and Deputy Ren, that is including the, the, the law enforcement side of the house, too. Uh, as I've said many times, uh, I guess in the future, I may have to say it from the podium, but you are the best. And then to my family. Uh, my wife and curls, let me do this.
Okay, well, I want to thank everybody, one, for coming out tonight. I want to thank the veterans, and I have a good number of them in my family. My father served in World War II, and I had an uncle at the Battle of the Bulge, and, uh, went from D-Day to the Battle of the Bulge, and, uh, an uncle who was in Vietnam for a number of years. So great respect for the veterans. The, um, I want to thank all the citizens who did their civic duty and voted in the election. Win or lose, I think that is what we do, is we express our opinion. And I do hope that we can move on in a civil manner going forward and work together. So with that, and that, and the Rotary Club and the flags, I, I am grateful for everybody being here, thank you.
Yes, and I want to say also, you know, ditto to the, uh, the, the veterans and great, you know, respect and appreciation for what they do. Uh, I know we have numerous veterans in our community, and, uh, and so I can't say thank you enough for what you do, and even sitting here. And, uh, even the Rotary recognizing them with what they do with the flags. And so, uh, I, you know, you sit here all night and say thank you, it still wouldn't be enough. And I'm going to say too, you know, nicely said, uh, Darcy, concerning, uh, Brandon and Jeff, so I want to say thank you guys, I know, uh, I was going to do this next month, but, uh, so, you know, but thank you for what you've done. Now, we haven't always, uh, agreed on things, but I've enjoyed getting to know you guys and working with you, so thank you so much for your service to the town and to the residents and to the community. And, and it means a lot, so, and it, a lot of people, So, and a lot of people don't realize how much work, time, and effort it takes to, you know, prepare for these meetings and whatnot. So, it is a tough position when you're sitting here and taking arrows at times. So, so thank you for the years of service that you guys have given to town. And I want to say, you know, saying thank you also, thank you for everyone who came out and voted, all the residents who came out and gave of their time to, I'm going to say, let their voice be heard, you know, what their desires are. And so, just, you know, a lot of countries don't have this opportunity and can't come out freely and vote and select their, you know, the people who lead to various forms of government. And so, so thank you for all the residents who came out and voted. And especially too, thank you for the candidates who gave of their time, effort, and expense throughout the summer in campaigning and everything they did. So thank you for all you did. And it's, it's an effort, and a lot of people don't realize how hard it is. It is tough, you know, it is work. And so, I appreciate everybody who came out and who ran, the candidates. And I hope we can work together, I hope there can be some healing in this town. I feel like the election was, it got off track in places, and I won't go into it, but I hope we can work together to, you know, have the best town and continue to grow our town as far as, you know, unity and just have a, you know, a good working relationship with all of us, and let some of this stuff go and not continue on with some of the things that's been going on, let's put it that way. So, so again, thank you for everyone who's been involved in the election, from residents to candidates, so thank you. And with that being said, I'll say thank you for everyone coming out tonight, and it was fun seeing this little bit of snow that we had. So, we're going to, we're actually going to move into a closed session to discuss some business here in a little bit, but can I get a motion to move into a closed session?
Make a motion when you enter into a closed session.
Okay, can I get a second? All in favor? Favor? So we're going to take about a 10-minute, 15-minute break so we can go into a closed session, so thank you guys for coming out tonight.